Okay. Good evening, all. Welcome to the 2000, I'm sorry, December 14th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. The meeting is being conducted consistent with Assembly Bill 361 and Government Code Section 54953 Subsection E. The Planning Commission Meeting includes teleconference participation by all members. We are conducting the meeting using the Zoom platform, streaming live in the city, on the city website, and broadcasting on Comcast Channel 15, as well as via the city YouTube channel. Public members have the opportunity to submit emails to city staff. A report of all written comments was distributed to Planning Commission members via email and posted to the city's website under Documents Received After Published Agenda. We will begin by having the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Ms. Madikas, will you please take a roll?
Good evening. Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Here.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson? Absent. Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Vice Chair Lo? Thank you.
And I would like to acknowledge our newest member, Commissioner Myers. Welcome. We'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, but you are welcome. And I wanted to move to public comments and open public comments. The public comment section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Planning Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers wishing to address the Planning Commission should limit their comments to three minutes. I will ask Ms. Madikas to moderate the public comment portion of the meeting. At the end of the public comment, we will address any questions that come up. Keep in mind, if you are speaking, keep your voice up. We are competing with another event downstairs, and it is very loud. So, Ms. Madikas, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do, Chair Lo. We have one public comment here in the council chambers. We have Mr. David Watley.
Please come up to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
Okay. So I'm going to use this little overhead thing. Wait, can you start my time once? Please, sorry, I just, yeah, okay. Can you see? I just have five slides. I just did it right now, like, on my phone. But I just want, like... Sorry, I just have five slides. And so I just want, like, members of the public to be able to follow along with what I'm saying, so I just kind of provided some pictures to help kind of guide, you know, to follow along with the presentation. Okay, so I'm ready. So it's three minutes, right?
Yes.
Okay. So... It says 222.
Oh, the, um, that's not working.
Oh, okay. So I'll just, you know what? I'll just check in, like, to see how I am. There's only five slides, and I only get three minutes, so I'm gonna do my best. Okay, so, good evening, Hayward Planning Commission. My name is David Watley, and I am an alumnus of Mount Eden High School. Go Monarchs, class of '96, long time ago. And so I actually don't live in Hayward anymore, but I'm here visiting family for the holidays. And so I have spoken at city council meetings over the years in the past, visiting family over the years, because I've primarily lived in Los Angeles, for example, and also out of the country. So I wanted to just take a few moments during this Planning Commission meeting to introduce a community initiative that I started while living in Los Angeles County some years back, and I want to introduce it today in Alameda County. Okay, so... So I do have a website. That's the most current. It's... Is there a reason why it's going back like that? Can you not do that? Whoever's, just, yeah. Sorry, it's, I want, so the, I'm trying to, anyhow, let me just move on. How are we doing on time?
There's a minute and 31 seconds.
Okay. So let me just plow ahead on this. Okay. So the name of the community initiative is called Padres, Madres y Parientes Unidos. And in a nutshell, it's a community initiative that I started while living in the city of Santa Monica in Los Angeles County. It's a community initiative that seeks to address and remedy community issues that adversely impact Latinos, African Americans, and Afro-Latino individuals and families. This is a website that talks a little bit about what the community initiative is when I started it back several years ago in the city of Santa Monica in Los Angeles County. There's the Santa Monica website. If you're not familiar, it's santamonica.gov, if anyone's interested in visiting Santa Monica. It's a beach town. It's famous for its pier. I highly recommend taking a vacation there. So how am I doing on time?
There's 10 seconds remaining.
Okay. So can I just finish this last thought, if I go over the time, just because of the constraints?
We can't go over the time, so use your time wisely. 10, 10 seconds.
So can I finish, may I just finish my thought, Chairwoman?
You have 10 seconds, sir.
Okay.
Please do.
So this is the city attorney. She's actually doubles as the private attorney for Vice President Kamala Harris. And I asked her if I need to file, like, a business permit to introduce a community initiative, and she said that I don't. And she's, the last time I talked to her on the phone, she was serving as the Deputy Secretary for the Department of Energy under the Biden-Harris administration. So I just want to know, I just want to let staff know that I don't need any type of permits to introduce a community initiative in Alameda County. So thank you for your time with that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You got it.
Do we have any other public comments?
Yes, Chair, we do have a Zoom attendee who would like to make a public comment. We have Amy Beth Willis.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Amy Beth Willis, and I'm with Save the Bay. Save the Bay is a regional nonprofit that works on pollution prevention and climate resilience in the Bay Area. And one of our priorities for Hayward's general plan update is equitable flood resilience. And so we submitted a letter during the public comment period with proposed edits to the hazard and EJ elements, and received the staff's responses to our comment letter. Thank you so much to the planning team for meeting with us and working with us to include many of our recommendations. We also submitted another letter this...
Excuse me, Ms. Willis. I believe the public comments that you're making are in reference to the item number two that's on the agenda tonight? Is that correct?
Oh, yes, that's correct. Sorry, did I go too soon?
Um, yes, right now, we are conducting general public comments.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I will speak again at that time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair Lo, at this time, I do not see any other hands raised on Zoom, and no other attendees in the chambers for public comment.
At this time, I will close public comment, and we will move on to the agenda items. For agenda item number one, the decision of the Planning Commission is final unless appealed. The appeal period is 10 days from the date of the decision. If appealed, a public hearing will be scheduled before the city council for final decision. Item number one is a proposed development of 13 townhome condominium units and related site improvements, including a minor modification on vacant 0.47 acre site at 22810 Atherton Street and 22809 Watkins Street, APNs 428-0081-011-02, 428-0081-012-02, and 4280081-01300, requiring approval of tentative tract map for condominium purposes, 8625, and site plan review application number 202105719, and Class 32 exemption, infill development project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Rodolfo Chacon for Chacon Architecture applicant on behalf of Jim Zomorodi of KZ Investment Funds Incorporated owner. Does the staff have a presentation to make on this item?
Yes, we do. Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Lo, and members of the commission. It's really nice to be here with you tonight. So this is a presentation on a proposed 13-unit townhome development. It will require approval by the commission on investing tentative map and site plan review, as you just outlined. It works. So the development is proposed on three vacant lots that would be aggregated to make a single half-acre lot. The property has three frontages along D Street, Watkins, and Atherton Streets, as shown on the slide. The site is located in the downtown specific plan area. It's about a quarter of a mile from the downtown BART, and it's surrounded by single-family development on the south, commercial development to the east, and then multifamily development uses to the north and to the west of the project site. It is zoned neighborhood commercial, neighborhood general district, and has a city center high-density residential general plan land use designation. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, just to orient you on the site, the top of your slide is D Street, the left of the slide is Atherton, yeah, left of the site is Atherton, and the right of the site is Watkins Street. 10 of the units would be located in two L-shaped buildings that would front public right-of-way. The buildings would be separated by a pedestrian breezeway that's shown in the dashed yellow line at the top of the slide, and it would be accessible from D Street and provide a secured location for mailboxes and bicycle parking. Three of the units would be located in a building at the rear of the site. The units would all have single-car garages that would be accessed from a one-way driveway. It would have ingress from Watkins Street and egress to Atherton Street. The development would also include a central trash enclosure that would be accessed from that rear driveway, small patios and yards accessible from each unit, a 300-square-foot common open space, and approximately 4,600 square feet of landscaping that would be scattered throughout the site. So these images show the street facing elevations. Up at the top, what you see is the elevation that would front to D Street. These buildings, those two L-shaped buildings, would reach about 39 feet in height. They're three-story units, and the units would range from about 1,054 square feet to 1,476 square feet. Here are the interior elevations, and the front facade on the bottom left of the slide of the rear building. The rear building would reach 30 feet in height, and the units would range from about 1,050 square feet up to 1,190 square feet. All of the units would include three bedrooms and three bathrooms, and all of the units would have a ground-floor bedroom-bathroom combination. So these renderings show the development from D Street on the left and from Atherton Street, so turning that corner on the right. The project reflects a contemporary architectural design. Facade articulation and massing breaks are achieved through decorative fins, stoop entries, balconies and recesses, and variations in roof height, and the use of varied colors and materials. As described in the staff report and the related findings, the proposed development is consistent with the applicable general plan, density and floor area ratio, as well as land use goals and policies and housing-related policies as well. It's consistent with the downtown specific plan and the applicable neighborhood general district regulations, with the exception that the applicant is asking for a minor deviation to increase the building run for those L-shaped buildings from three units to four units along D Street. As described in the staff report, the applicant modified the original proposal to break up one long building into the two smaller L-shaped buildings and introduce that pedestrian breezeway in order to bring it into closer conformance with the code. In addition, the applicant pulled in the corner units to create a break in that massing, so from D Street, it really does look like three units. So the applicant, while they will move from three to four units on that run along D Street, it will appear to be three units, and staff believes that they have met the intent and spirit of the code. In addition, the code does allow for this type of minor exception without any special variances, and staff recommends that the commission approve it, as detailed in the findings and staff report. So the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Class 32 infill exemption. It's under five acres, it's infill, surrounded by development, it's consistent with regulations, it has no value as habitat, and would not result in any environmental impacts due to its size, scale, and location. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed site plan review, investing tentative tract map, and minor modification to development standards based on the draft findings in Attachment 2, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in Attachment 3. That concludes the presentation. I do want to let you know that the applicant is in the audience, and they're happy to answer questions. Thank you.
And does the applicant want to give a presentation, or just answer questions?
Just answer questions.
Okay. And so we can move on to public comment for this item.
Chair Lo, I do not have any comments online. We did receive one public comment card for this previously, but the speaker has left the chambers, so we do not have any comments.
Thank you. At this time, I will close public comments and open for Commissioner questions. Are there any Commissioner questions? Commissioner Myers?
Hi there, thank you. I think I've been known to have a few questions now and then, so bear with me. First off, I think it's, seems to be a very attractive building. I like the layout. I have no problem with changing the row houses per run. I think it adds to the features. I like that it adds, of course, to the rene count. I do have a question, and maybe you could speak a little bit on, on the fact that we're going from a half-an-acre open land to 1,690 square feet of, of open land, not counting the landscaping. Could you just talk a little bit about that? I wanted to see the water running down, the difference between the water running down to the water table versus into the storm drains.
So every development project is required pursuant to C3. It's a, it's a stormwater permit that is, every jurisdiction in Alameda County is subject to. Every development project has to retain and treat stormwater on the site. Typically, the way that developments do that, especially on, like, an infill site, is through small swales, sometimes through pervious concrete, and then what they do is they add in some fill, some special fill to create, like, percolation areas, so it's treated before it runs into any, before it runs off the site. But it, it's intended, the C3 permit, and our engineering staff reviews every development project for this to ensure that all the stormwater is retained and treated on-site.
Excellent, thank you. Also, the, let's see, I appreciate that it falls under the REACH Code. Does that necessarily say that every garage will have an EV charging capability?
Yes. Eric, who actually authored, was one of the authors of the REACH Code, confirms yes.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't particularly see that specific, so I just wanted to verify that. And then regarding the fence that's along the existing homes, will that be a six, I know it says six-foot wood fence, will it replace the existing fence, or will it be adjacent?
It, the applicant responded to your question, and it was, it was provided, like, at 4:00 this afternoon, so you might not have had a chance to take a look at this yet, but the applicant clarified that they would not be replacing the fence, that they intend to just use the fence that's there now, and they can provide more information if you have additional questions for them.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering, like, some people's back garages, there is no fence behind it, so will it go from their garage right into the, to the water runoff, the treatment area?
I think that that's a question maybe the architect can answer, because I, staff believed it would be a new fence, like you did. There was an error on the plans, and the applicant clarified that they didn't intend to replace it, but I think it would be a good question to ask them what their plan is for those areas where there is no fence, and it's just the wall of the building.
Okay. I kind of anticipate a possible property line conflict in the future with nobody knowing where that line is. Okay, so will that be sometime in the future, or is there somebody here who can answer?
Yes, the applicant is in the audience, and the architect, and they can answer those questions.
Please, please come up to the microphone and press the button so that it turns red.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rodolfo Chacon, the architect.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, currently, we actually didn't have a specific fence to, that we're planning to install there. We're currently going to leave that as is. I've been, we're open to, you know, suggestions. I have the owner here, too. But yeah, and my, my understanding is it's not a garage right there, it's the side of the, the house there, so, but, and just to clarify, that back area adjacent to the walkway, that is the whole bioretention area. And as, as Ms. Schmidt stated, that that would be the area where the water is percolated and metals are removed, and then it goes to the storm network, so.
Okay. Have you by chance spoken to any of the homeowners there and talked about the perimeter there?
You know, I have not personally, no.
Okay. Okay, I just, I think that's something that might be of concern, that property line in the future.
Understood, noted, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then my last question is a PG&E vault on, I think it's Watkins. Is that existing, new, and is it going to be above ground?
It's existing, and it's underground.
Oh, it is, okay.
I'm sorry. I have, I can't, sorry. This is a public hearing, right? She just said you closed public hearing, and the public can't even hear what you're asking. You're making all of these comments about this project, and then nobody in the public can comment after? That makes no sense. I just stepped outside, I filled out a speaker card before the meeting began. Can I please comment on this when you're done with your questions for staff? This is a public hearing, and it's a multimillion-dollar real estate development project in Alameda County.
We can, we can give you three minutes, not right now, so please...
At the end of the staff, at the end of your questions?
Right.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Myers.
Okay. I believe, I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Franco Clausen.
You know, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing some really good questions up, because in our meetings before, there's always been questions about the wall, and how it's going to either cause conflict in the future in a lot of instances. I mean, well, not a lot, I haven't been here that long, but it was, it was just a question, so the suggestion is to look at that, since you haven't been there to see it. Because of separation of property, if it hasn't been discussed with the neighbors, it has come up in our commission meetings. So it was just something, to your point, I just want to make sure that we mention, that we add in some sort of notes that you take a look, because there's also, you know, problems that could cause conflict with the neighbors, and we don't, we don't want to start on that, on that foot.
Any other questions from, okay, Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you, Chair Lo. My question was just on the, the roof line. I really appreciate the, the, the modern amenities and the overall look of the project, but the, the roof line kind of just seemed a little overbearing, it kind of looked like a helipad, sort of, and I'm wondering if there was any thought put into making it a little more pitched, or a little bit more to match the other townhomes around in the area.
I'll, the architect can speak, but come, come, come up, and you can talk about it, but I'll just say from staff's position, that the flat roofs are typical of contemporary architectural styles, which is what the applicant presented, and staff felt that it, it wasn't necessary to match surrounding development in order to be a, a good quality development. And then maybe you can talk about your process and decisions?
Sure, yeah. It is, it is somewhat of a flat roof, and we tried to, you know, I was trying to get away from too much of a boxy design. I thought the rowhouse look, as specified in the neighborhood general, had a more of a prominent presence, and I thought the, the sloped roofs, and they have a, you know, a bit of an overhang would give it more of a prominence in that, in its presence, and I guess try to reemphasize the rowhouse aesthetic. And, and just, I guess the overhangs provide shade and so on, and, and just wanted to get away from, I know, say, the adjacent property was kind of, really kind of boxy and so on, and I just thought this would, I just kind of deviate a little bit, but also provide a little bit of a, a departure, but also I think it'll enhance, I thought, the, the look of that block, so.
Any other questions, Commissioner Goodbody? And I apologize to Commissioner Franco Clausen, I cut you off. Go ahead. Did you have another question?
No, no, I said it's fine, she answered.
Oh, she answered. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part. Any other Commissioner questions? No? Okay, I have a couple of questions. I wanted to see, and this is for the architect, sorry to make you get your steps in today. Or staff, if staff wants to answer it, too, that's great. So my question is, I do love, I like the architecture. I like the way that it, it looks. I think it looks a little different than what we've seen, and I like that. My question is first to staff. My first question is, I know in a previous meeting, I think last week's meeting, staff talked to us about how the in-lu fees, staff actually prefers in-lu fees in smaller projects. Is this the size project that staff prefers in-lu fees on?
Yes, because it would result in a single affordable unit if they were to comply with the code.
Okay.
Because it, when it's a fractional unit, they typically pay the fee, so in, in this case, it becomes administratively difficult to monitor income levels. Any affordable housing is great. If he, if the applicant had decided to offer it, we would have gladly recommended approval of it, but in this case, the applicant has indicated they want a pay-in-lu fee.
Got it. And then I noticed that, and maybe I misread it, but I noticed it said it's all, all electric, solar-ready, and EV-ready. Would the applicant be amenable to maybe adding actual solar panels or EV chargers?
Question for my, my client. Maybe Jim can field this one?
No, Commissioner, my name is Jim Zomorodi, and...
Oh, wait till you get to the microphone, please, so we can, I'll hear you, and everyone at home can hear you as well.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Zomorodi. Thank you for this opportunity to present this project. We are open to EV and chargers and everything that's possible and everything. The fact that we have flat roofs, it's going to be hard to put solars up there and everything, but definitely that would be something that we can look at and into and everything.
And what about the EV chargers?
Yeah, definitely, the EV chargers are going to be there. Everybody has a Tesla today, you got to have an EV charger and everything.
Okay, so will, so they will actually be there? Won't just be EV-ready? You actually providing EV chargers?
Yes, we are providing chargers.
And, okay, so I apologize for missing that. And then the other thing I was wondering is, is it possible to, and this is for the architect, sorry, is it possible to add usable balconies to these?
Well, actually, we do have balconies.
Oh, okay.
Each one has a, yeah, eight by 12.
Because I saw some, but I couldn't tell if everyone had it, or just some of them?
Yeah, they, they all have it, yeah.
Okay, okay. Wasn't sure, wasn't sure. And then the other thing I was going to ask, on the part where it was all one facing D Street, one, one building, and now it's two buildings, so you could have the walkway, pedestrian walkway.
Correct.
Is it possible to put some sort of artwork that's facing D Street to beautify the community?
Like a, like a mural or something like that?
I was thinking maybe some sort of statue, or sculpture, or something.
In that little breezeway area?
Yep.
Is that a lot of space there, to be honest? I mean, we'd have to think about what would be appropriate, but we do have a kind of a decorative arbor there as you walk in, and the fence itself is, if you notice, we're trying to get a little bit... the fence itself is, if you notice, we're trying to get a little bit away from the just vertical, but maybe just the gate. We do a little bit of a angled metal fabricated fence that's a little more custom, so that will give it a little bit of a visual interest as you walk by, not just the vertical, but a kind of angled, maybe a mesh behind for security, but at the same time, not just a a regular gate. So there is some enhancements there, but I'd have to maybe think about that to see what, what did you have in mind or something?
I was just thinking of a sculpture or something that could face D Street and maybe be something to look at when people walk, drive down the street.
Yeah, I'd have to think about that for a little bit. Just a lot of space there because there's a, there's also mailboxes there and bike racks and it gets, it's about 12, 13 feet wide and so we'd have to kind of walk around. Something that we'd have to think about, but.
And just like we asked, we talked about before in previous projects, are the mailboxes in a secure location?
Well, they, we're thinking they'll be locked. They'll be, have a locking mechanism on the mailboxes, you know, as secure as they can be without, you know, making a, putting them in an enclosure or something. So that's, you know, we're, they're basically, we're kind of relying on the the lockable mechanisms and, you know, beyond that, we haven't provided any other further measures as far as, you know, for for the security of the mailboxes.
Would you be willing to consider providing further measures, like moving them to a more secure location or providing mailboxes that maybe have better locks or or different type of material?
Yeah, I think we can revisit. There's a few locations. We have a kind of a community area towards the back there, which is more inbound of the project, maybe not so, you know, readily adjacent to the main street. So there, yeah, I think we can explore some other locations for that, maybe more where there's more eyes, you know, and lighting.
That's what I'm.
Lighting and so on. There's some measures that we can take to enhance the.
And would you consider that as a condition of approval?
Oh, a condition of approval? Yeah, I think. I would venture to say that's one element that I think has some flexibility that we can relocate it to a more secure location and that maybe the community area towards the, towards the back of the site.
And one last thing, the community area. Can you, I I think there's going to be a like a picnic table or bench or something there. Can you tell me a little bit more about that area, what it's going to look like?
Uh, yeah, so it'll be just like a little picnic table, has a little barbecue area too, just sitting and just kind of a place to have coffee and, you know, basically open to the sky and there'll be a nice palm tree right there. And so, yeah, just a basically open, you know, place for people to kind of sit and enjoy the California weather.
Thank you for explaining and answering all those questions. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Do any other commissioners have questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, wait. Commissioner Franco Clausen.
Just to kind of follow back on my colleague here when it came to the roof, I know that the houses are EV ready, but with the flat roof, it doesn't really give them an opportunity to even add solar. Is that what you're saying? I just want to make sure when you're explaining it a little bit is while it's EV ready.
Well, I think there's.
But the roof is flat, so you can't, because you need an angle for the solar? I'm sorry, I just want to expand.
We can always prop them up on on stanchions. There's, the majority of the project is actually a flat roof and we can always just put them, you know, angled on the, on the flat, on the flat roof. I mean, sometimes it's ideal that the roof already has the pitch, but we can also do it where they just kind of, you know, pitch and so on.
I have solar. Yeah, and then just to follow that is, I think you, Commissioner, you asked a question of, they don't come with solar though, right?
No.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Just to add some clarifying information, the REACH code requires every single family home and townhome to be built with solar these days, so it it's required by building code and the REACH code, so.
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll be providing those. But yeah, they can be, they can reside on the, on the flat roofs, so they have with their own, you know, legs on them and so on, so.
Thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to give three minutes to the previous speaker. I'm going to open public comments just for the sole purpose, a limited purpose of having the speaker who had turned in his card to be allowed to have his three minutes. So you may come up to the podium now.
Okay, thanks so much. I I filled out the card before the meeting began, so I didn't know. I just stepped out and then I didn't know.
So your three minutes has started, so go ahead and tell us.
Okay, so, well, I think the public should know that perhaps it should be considered by the residents of Hayward that, you know, anyhow, maybe there needs to be some meeting management adjustments. Okay, so anyhow, what is the name of your development company? Your real estate company?
KZ.
KZ what? KZ Investment Funds. So I I'm looking at a staff, part of the staff report right now. What are, what are the prices for these condos? It's thirteen, how many, it's townhouses? Like 13? New construction? How much are they going to be listed for? Starting, would you, would you guess?
Staff doesn't have that information.
Okay, would you say over a million dollars would be fair?
Yes.
If I, okay, I, let's, okay, first of all, let me give my email address because I didn't give that in the, members of the public can contact me at dwhatley@ UCLA.edu, D W H A T L E Y at UCLA.edu. So I'm guessing, because I I had a conversation with the architect, Mr. Chacon, before this meeting, and I said they're probably going to go for at least 1.5 million. So who is the target resident that's going to be buying these condos? Does staff have any idea about that? And how does that align with the priorities this council has set in terms of equity, diversity and inclusion? I I don't see any of this addressed in your staff report, with all due respect. Is that correct?
With all due respect, staff is supportive of any housing development.
I'm sorry, can you start over? I can't hear you. Can you speak more into the mic?
So staff supports housing developments that are consistent with the code and the proposed project at 30.
I don't believe that this is consistent with the code and I don't believe that this is consistent with the character and in, and the history of the city of Hayward. Having graduated from Mount Eden High School in 1996, this violates the character of this community, which is a blue collar, working class town. Nobody can afford in Elamita County to buy a 1.5 million dollar condo. And you're going to approve it? Is that correct? Is that your staff recommendation to approve this project?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I just, it says in the staff report that any member of the public can appeal within 10 days. This is a public hearing, so I'm letting you know now I'm appealing this. And I would like to be provided by staff the correct policies and procedures so that it's properly registered. And I will be making a phone call to some state folks that I know because I I respectfully disagree and I honor and value your education and background in planning, but I know for a fact that this does not conform with the character.
Excuse me, Chairlow.
And the history of the city of Hayward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I will, I would like to have the procedure to appeal.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So are you going to provide that?
We're, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Are you going to provide the the appeal process?
The, the.
Will you, will staff provide that to me?
The planning commission does not respond to public comment at this time, but you are.
Okay, so it says in the staff report that you can appeal this. How do I do that?
So.
Within 10 days?
You, you have nothing to appeal yet. We haven't even ruled, we haven't even.
Whatever you appeal, it's this, I'm appealing this. This is not right for Hayward.
Okay, your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have any comments by the commissioners? Any Commissioner comments? Oh, yes, the public comment was only open for that one limited purpose. So if you were asking that, close it. Yes, it is closed.
So I do have a.
Oh, go ahead Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you Chair. So I'm a super big fan of this development. I love the architecture. I love the roof line. I love how it's articulated. I think it's brilliantly broken up. I'm totally supportive of making a motion to approve this application. You know, I was studying the site plan a little bit and the mailbox issue that you brought up, I I think, I actually think that that location is actually a pretty good location. I'm a little worried if it's in the back. It might be a little more. So I guess my point is that I'd be worried if the, if there was a additional condition of approval issued. I think it should be pretty flexible to allow the applicant to use their ingenuity to find the best possible place for that.
Yeah, I was just concerned with the mailbox being on D Street. It's a very busy street and and we already have a lot of problem with mail theft, even when we don't have busy streets. So that was my thought process.
And I would presume that this would be a fairly well lit location. And I I don't know about the rear of the the site and I I don't know enough about mail theft and everything along those lines. So if somebody was going to, I would like to make a motion, but if somebody's going to adjust it, I would just suggest there be some flexibility in the condition if it's written.
Are there any other comments? Any other comments? So did you formally make a motion?
Yes, I would formally make a motion to approve the vesting tentative map as written.
I'll second. And I would ask the, I would like to make a very brief comment, that I would ask the applicant and the architect to please consider, just making sure the mailboxes are in a safe location or, as Commissioner Stevens said, at least a well lit location. I don't want there to be a, an issue with the mail theft as well as, you know, just making sure that they're safe. Those things are safe. Ms. Matokos, would you please take role, or take a vote rather?
Yes, most definitely. Vice Chair, just for confirmation, just to confirm, the motion was made by Commissioner Stevens and seconded by Commissioner Franco Clausen. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, so I can go and take the vote at this time. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson absent. Chair Ali Sullivan absent. Vice Chairlow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two. For agenda, item number two, item continued from 11/9/2023, the planning commission may make a recommendation to the city council. Item number two is a proposed update to the Hayward Climate Action Plan, amended hazards element and adoption of new environmental justice element, requiring an amendment to the Hayward 2040 general plan, and adoption of related environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Does staff has a, have a presentation regarding item number two?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm here again to give you another presentation. So this is a presentation on a comprehensive update to the city's climate action plan, hazards element and a new environmental justice element. I'm joined by Eric Pearson, Environmental Services Manager at the end of the dais, and McKenna Calucci, Sustainability and Climate Action Fellow. And we've worked in partnership with Ringcon Consultants to develop these documents before you tonight. Oh. Okay, I won't. Okay, this project started back in 2021. At that time, the city entered into a consulting agreement with Ringcon Consultants to prepare general plan amendments on the city's housing element, hazards element, to update the climate action plan and to prepare a new environmental justice element. Staff decided to combine all of these updates into one large project because issues of housing, climate change, vulnerable populations, sustainable development are inextricably linked. The housing element did move more quickly due to statutory requirements, but these other elements were updated simultaneously to ensure consistency. I'm going to provide a brief outline of the environmental justice and hazards element updates, and then I'm going to hand it over to Erica and McKenna to provide you an update on the climate action plan. Next slide. Thanks. As detailed in the environmental justice technical report that was attached to the draft element and referenced in the staff report, the CAL EPA developed the CAL Enviro Screen Tool to identify what are called disadvantaged communities throughout California. The tool uses existing environmental health and socioeconomic data to rank census tracts based on 20 distinct indicators organized into two groupings, pollution burden and population characteristics. Pollution burden looks at exposures to environmental pollutants and surrounding environmental factors, and population characteristics look at health indicators of sensitive populations and socioeconomic factors such as poverty, status, education attainment, linguistic isolation, among others. Of Hayward's 37 census tracts, there's a spectrum of CAL Enviro Screen scores with 26 of those census tracts showing some measure of pollution and or population burden. Next slide, please. To address those impacts, and they're, it's detailed in the technical report and in the element, so I'm just trying to keep the presentation a bit more brief. But to address the impacts identified in the documents provided to you, the proposed environmental justice element contains goals, policies and programs on the various topic areas shown on the screen. And these topic areas are very specifically described and required by state law. It's also important to note that there's a significant amount of crossover between the policies and programs in this environmental justice element under these various topics and other general plan elements like the housing element, the mobility element, which deals with, you know, pedestrian access, the natural resources element, the hazards element, which we'll also talk about, as well as the climate action plan, and the city's community health and quality of life element. These intersections where goals and policies intersect among all these elements is described at the end of every chapter of each section in the environmental justice element. Next slide, please. So the hazards element includes goals, policies and programs to address natural and manmade hazards. In this element, this element exists in the general plan. However, this update, during this update, we prepared a climate change vulnerability assessment and evacuation analysis, both of which were included as attachments to the element. The climate change vulnerability assessment identified new climate change related hazards such as extreme heat, variable precipitation, drought, regional wildfire and sea level rise. And the evacuation analysis identified opportunities to improve connectivity and resiliency in the transportation network under various scenarios. Next slide, please. The draft hazards element included modified policies in areas related to regional coordination, seismic and geologic hazards, flood hazards, rising sea level, urban wildfire, and then it included new sections on evacuation capacity and climate change adaptation and resilience, which are specifically tied to the climate action plan that you're going to hear more about. So when you're reading all these different elements, you're going to see the, each of these policies and topics reflected in the other elements. So they're all really tied together intentionally. Next slide, please. So the draft documents were released, all of them, hazards, EJ and CAP were released for a 40-day public review in October and November of this year. On the hazards and EJ elements, the city received substantive comments from Saves the Bay Green Belt Alliance, the Hayward Area Recreation District, and from Mills College Northwestern University. Saves the Bay Green Belt made 26 specific comments, proposed changes, some additions to the EJ and hazards elements. As detailed in attachment 11 to your staff report, the city accepted or partially accepted 19 of those comments. After publication of the staff report, Saves the Bay did provide another letter which was forwarded to the commission earlier this week, and city staff provided a response both to the commenters and provided to the commission earlier today. And in that response to the four comments that were, again, brought up in the letter that we got this week, staff is accepting one of the comments, still reviewing the feasibility of another comment and is going to reject two of the comments as we did as detailed in attachment 11 to the staff report. The Hayward Area Recreation District commented on park accessibility, coordination of safety between police and hard officers, and asked for more clarification with regard to geographic areas. Staff, as detailed in attachment 11, has accepted all of those comments. And then the Mills College Northwestern University comments related to expanding a program, a policy related to adopting an ordinance for smoke-free multifamily housing, and staff accepted those comments as well. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Eric Pearson and McKenna Calucci to present on the update to the climate action plan.
All right, thank you Leah. Good evening Commissioners. So the the third portion of the general. So the third portion of the general plan we're asking the commission to consider tonight is the draft updates to the climate action plan. Hayward's first climate action plan was adopted in 2009, and then in 2014, we completed a comprehensive update of the city's general plan. And so at that time, the cap was updated and incorporated into the general plan. And so that 2014 climate action plan, it includes the policies and programs that we needed to achieve our 2020 greenhouse gas reduction target. We were able to achieve that goal in 2018, and that was 20% below 2005-level emissions. So then in 2020, our city council adopted new greenhouse gas emission reduction targets that are shown here on this slide. Both the 55% by 2030 and carbon neutrality by 2045 are very ambitious goals, however, they are in alignment with the state's goals. And so the purpose of this current climate action plan update is to identify the measures and actions that we need in order to meet this 2030 target. So this slide shows kind of how the climate action plan is intended to help us meet these long-term targets. The dark green line, let's see if I can point yet, so this is the business-as-usual forecasted emissions. The gray line shows the adjusted forecast, and this accounts for state-level legislation and programs. The lighter green line that comes all the way down here to 2045 at the bottom of the chart, this shows the council-adopted targets with notes about the 2030 and 2045 targets. And then the yellow line shows the estimated forecast of emissions based on full implementation of all the draft measures and actions that we have identified. You can see that this yellow line, it does get us to meet the goal in 2030, but it does not get us all the way down to carbon neutrality by 2045. However, it does put us on a pretty good path to get within reach, and we do intend to update the climate action plan again sometime around 2030 to then chart the course for the next 10 to 15 years. So I'm going to turn it over to McKenna to present the next few slides.
Thank you, Eric. So this here is a snapshot of our emissions from 2019, even though we do have more recent inventories, 2020 and 2021 were heavily influenced by the pandemic, so using 2019 as a baseline is recommended. And so the emissions on this pie chart are broken down by sector. As you can see, over three-quarters of our emissions come from on-road transportation and natural gas in buildings, and that includes everything from your gas-based heater to industrial uses. So following these two sectors, the next largest sector is solid waste, which accounts for 7% of our emissions. So based on this breakdown, you'll see many of the proposed measures and actions are focused on reducing emissions related to transportation and natural gas in buildings. And then, so based on those emissions, community feedback, and research, we identified these five sectors where we can reduce emissions and build resilience to climate change. The sectors are building energy, transportation, solid waste, waste and wastewater, and carbon sequestration. The breakdown of measures and actions is shown on this slide. The measures identify specific goals, and actions are the supportive programs that will accomplish those goals. In total, we have 18 measures that are supported by 182 actions, and the full list of draft actions is in the draft cap, which is Attachment 4 to the staff report for this item. So since we've published the draft climate action plan, we've received written comments from more than 30 community members. We also hosted a public workshop on Monday, October 30th, where 16 community members attended, and these six topics emerged as the most popular feedback and questions. So electrification, in particular, concerns over grid reliability and costs was one. Tree planting, and in general, favor of more trees was a very popular comment. Micromobility, and in particular, support for improved walking and biking infrastructure. There were also concerns if the city's housing element and development goals were in conflict with the climate action plan. Some residents expressed a want for a synthetic turf ban within the climate action plan. And lastly, there was a major theme ensuring that all these climate action plans, actions were being implemented equitably, and wondering how outreach will be continued once the cap is adopted. And with that, I will give it back to Eric.
And I'll add, regarding that last slide, we do have, one of the attachments to the staff report is all the responses to all the comments that we received. So to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, we prepared an initial study and found that the climate action plan will not result in a significant impact to the environment, and so a negative declaration was prepared. We had a 30-day review period that ended December 8th, and we did not receive any public comments on those documents. For the hazards and environmental justice elements, again, no significant impacts are expected. Staff prepared an addendum to the environmental impact report that was prepared for the general plan in 2014. So we're asking the commission to consider these documents before making a recommendation to the city council. So we are tentatively scheduled to present the draft climate action plan, hazards element, and environmental justice element all to the city council on January 23rd. So we're recommending that the commission accept public comments, review and comment on the report, and make a recommendation to the city council to adopt the three elements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And does that conclude all staff reports? Thank you so much for all your hard work on that, and we will definitely agree with the first thing you want us to do. I'm going to open public comment at this time. Ms. Matokaj, do we have public comment?
I don't have any speakers here in the chambers, but there is a public comment on Zoom.
Okay, great.
We have Ms. Amy Beth Willis. Ms. Willis, if you can please begin your comment.
Hi, good evening again. I'm speaking in the correct time now. I'm Amy Beth Willis with Save the Bay, and Save the Bay is a regional nonprofit that works on pollution prevention and climate resilience in the Bay Area, and one of our priorities with the Hayward general plan update is equitable flood resilience. And as explained by Leah, we submitted a letter alongside Green Belt Alliance during the public comment period with proposed edits, and thank you so much to the planning team for meeting with us and working with us to include many of our recommendations. And we just wanted to kind of reinforce a couple of our recommendations, and I did get your response from our latest letter. And so we're really glad to see that our recommendation to create a sea-level-rise overlay district was accepted. We want to make sure that the next draft includes language requiring that you consider establishing a buffer zone along the shoreline and creek banks, and then with complete green streets. I'm glad to see in the proposed edits that you've added a green infrastructure to that language. And then finally, just wanted to emphasize that we understand that our proposal around the storm drain master plan doesn't fit with what the city is responsible for because flood control goes under the Alameda County Flood Control District, but we just wanted to emphasize that it's important for the city as well in your hazard planning to include some form of assessment of flood risk from extreme storms so that you don't have any gaps in flood risk planning, especially as we're facing, you know, more frequent storms due to climate change. So yes, just once again, thank you so much for all the time that the staff spent with us in working on our comments, and we really appreciate all you're doing to prepare Hayward to be climate resilient. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
I don't have any additional speakers online.
At this time, I will close public comments, and I will open--
I apologize, one hand actually just went up.
Okay, go ahead.
We have Ms. Marlena Rose Salva.
Hello, good evening. I appreciate being here. I'm going to just speak for Earth because as being from the tribes, I still remember the original traditional ways, and when foreigners come and build a civilization that literally wages war against Earth, taking out the native habitat, putting in infrastructure, paving over Earth, you know, there's no such thing as sustainable development, when to develop is to actually destroy the natural world. There's no such thing as climate resilience when you've literally taken out the natural world. You can't just put in trees. The Earth, she knows the root system. She understands, for example, specific trees that need to be in specific locations who are companions to other plants, like understory plants to oak trees. She knows how to naturally be fertile. She knows to leave the leaves. We have neighborhoods in every direction where leaves continue to be blown away, raked away, thrown away. You can't electrify because you have to literally mine Earth for her elements in order to have renewable energy, to have a power grid. You have to have electromagnetic frequencies that are so disruptive to wildlife, cause radiation and all sorts of disruption and health issues to wildlife as well as humans. It's impossible to sustain a civilization of industrialization that literally has waged war since, in this hemisphere, the Western Hemisphere, since 1492. And so it's impossible to wage war against Earth and yet be climate resilient. This is destruction of Earth, it's not climate change. There's literally been a war against the natural world in order to have an anthropocentric, human-centered, dominated world based on economic development as opposed to caring for our Earth Mother. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
I don't have any additional speakers on Zoom nor in the chambers.
At this time, I will close public comments. Before we go to commissioner questions, I do want the so-called record to reflect that Commissioner Patterson has joined us.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will open public, not public, commissioner comments, or questions, rather. Any questions? Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you, Chair Lo. I want to recognize first the staff's efforts on this breadth of work and meaningful engagement with Hayward residents and our affinity groups to help shape our city's roadmap toward our inaugural environmental justice element in every corner of our city. I know this is massive, it's not exactly a snack-sized document, so thank you. And while I'm not a subject matter expert on climate change or environmental justice policy, Hayward is a leader in sustainable local government, and my comments are more in the spirit of providing prioritization of the measures mentioned in the report, and I believe, that I believe will strengthen Hayward's stewardship of our sustainability efforts. So of all the measures mentioned in the report, I'm most excited about the actions that we are currently taking in the city's initiatives and those that I think that we can do first. So the first is on our partnerships, particularly with East Bay Energy, AVA, which is now known. They are experimenting with different types of programs to help residents build more sustainable homes and practices, and so I think I would encourage the city to really encourage, to increase the conversation and engagement with AVA to see what kinds of programs we can plug into to help residents. The second is electrification, as we saw the applicant before us, that electrifying everything, or as much as we can throughout our city's grid, will bring lots of benefit to the residents. Any incentives that we can provide to build out our multifamily units, our shopping centers, our campuses, our public transit infrastructure. And to speak to the first, some of the concerns brought forth with the cost of electrification, I would really encourage the city to just look at taxing our largest and our heaviest polluters of fossil fuels. 100% of the proceeds could support sustainable measures and would then, in turn, help people electrify their homes. And so those are my thoughts on the overall measures.
Did you have any questions for staff?
No.
Would you have any commissioner questions this time? All right, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair Lo, and thank you, staff. That's a wonderful report. I charted a few things down here on reasons why I had the desire to join the planning commission. First and foremost are a few items such as community safety, crime, maybe public art, really like those. But I think also, and more importantly, right now, renewable energies is really, there's a passion that I have for renewable energies such as solar, EVs, the climate change issues, and emergency preparedness, and also equality with all those. And I'm just, I think it's extremely apropos that on my first night, I have the honor of, you know, voting this in, I hope. So anyway, I can't imagine the number of hours it took to put this together, but thank you, as Commissioner Carter says, from the bottom of my heart. It's really a beautiful document, and I'm sure we will revise it in the future, time to time, but right now, I think it's beautiful. One question I do have, yes, I did get to a question. I know that there are, the VMT, the vehicle miles traveled, and I think that that's a really good priority. I wanted to also, I see a small note on idling vehicles, and to me, if you go across Hayward, and I've lived here for a long time, it's not always the miles, but the minutes that my car is driving. It could take me 45 minutes to get from one side to the other. So I'm hopeful in the future that we'll see vehicle minutes traveled, it's a new word, I think, VMT, instead of vehicle miles. And I was just curious, is that something that is on the possible board for the future? On the chalkboard?
We have actually not talked about that as a metric, but I, you know, I think that, well, we have a lot of newer cars that automatically, you know, turn off when they're stopped at a red light, so that helps. And I think generally the transition to EVs is going to, you know, help to address that issue, but I think you bring up a good point. I mean, it does, you know, just miles, miles is not the only thing we should be concerned about.
Right, and I know that, you know, the governor put in a certain transition period for EVs, and I know that we'll still have other vehicles from the past. I'm hoping to maybe expedite and not just wait for the natural attrition of these ICE cars. If there's a way, we can maybe work on the traffic management system to help minimize those minutes, which would also, I think, give us a little better quality of life because we're spending less time in traffic and, you know, we're all so busy, it might give us more time with our families. So that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Thank you. So I just want to, before I make my comments, I just want to go back and ask staff, in the reach requirement, is all new development required to have solar panel?
So actually, it's required by the building code. So our local reach code does not address solar because it's already--
Required.
In most, I don't, I can't remember exactly, but it's required in most building types.
And not just things to put there, but actual solar power? Okay. So I say that because I listen to all my colleagues, but I also live in Hayward, and I know this is a working-class family, and while I have the privilege, and I worked hard for that privilege, to have EV cars, and I know that we sit at a stoplight, my car turns off, all of our cars, even our children's cars turn off. That's not the average Hayward person. You know, I drive through this community a lot. You know, I used to take my son to school, my little sexy Prius, and I can tell you that-- And I can tell you that some of the biggest polluters are not because of choice, but because of necessity. While the governor has a very progressive idea of moving us into a space where we meet all these goals, and trust me, I'm a huge environmentalist. But the reality is if we don't match those opportunities for low-income families to have EV cars, we're never going to reach that. And most families here post-COVID and even prior to COVID are still struggling for income equality. And I I think sometimes when I sit here or any other meetings, I know what it's like to be homeless. I know what it's like to be a renter. I know what it's like to have to travel very far because I can afford to live forty forty-five miles from my job. Trust me, I don't want to sit in the emissions in traffic. I don't want to have to be forced. But when I drive around Hayward at night, it is not always the Teslas that are on the street. It's working families who don't have the privilege of working at home like I do. So, I mean, I think that while we have these very great ideas and I am a hundred percent for it, like solar power, gray water system, I compost, I do it all, I'm also have the privilege to do that. And I think coupled, I think staff, you did a great job, and you're speaking my language. But we should also, I I think that Commissioners also said about partnerships. You know, let's, Hayward does a good job of promoting on social media about all the things that we do. Wouldn't it be great if in that plan, we also talked about partnerships so Hayward residents can also have cars that are hybrid or electric? I think that's a part of the goal we forget, is that not everyone can afford to meet these demands. So a huge population is not going to be able to participate. And that would just be my comments.
If I if I might respond.
Please do.
I just want to let people know there there is a program at the Bay Area Air Quality Management District called Clean Cars for All, and it's geared toward lower-income households to purchase EVs. And then they also have information about a PG&E program that promotes used electric vehicles. So there's a couple of resources.
You know, thank you. I'd love for you to send that because I think someone mentioned, how do we communicate that to the community and meet them where they're at so they are aware? I guarantee you, the average person is just figuring out how they're going to get home, get their kids from daycare, maybe have somebody else, a FIA or a promotores, drop their kid off. There's a lot of partnerships in a lot of these low-income families. So unless we're communicating to people in their language and meeting them at the hours at their home, they will not know about these programs. So I think, I mean, I also follow Hayward consistently of all the cute dogs that are up for adoption to all the programs, and I share it with my friends, but I'm just one vessel. So I think outreach is very important. When you look at the demographics of this community, if we can uplift them, then we can actually meet these goals by the desired timeline.
Commissioner Stephen.
Thank you. So in in the response to some of the Save the Bays comments, I see a lot of where feasible. Who determines what is feasible?
I think it depends on on the program, but in a large part, it would be staff. Or it could be, in some cases, it may be staff bringing a proposal to the council. And I think it may be dependent on available funding.
So when this talks about nature-based solutions and that that we're going to study nature-based solutions over gray infrastructure, and it says where feasible, who assumes the liability if the nature-based solution fails?
Yeah, I think it would be the owner, designer of the of the project. I think in in that case, I would think that in a lot of cases, nature-based solutions are going to be feasible if you have the space for it. A lot of in a lot of those situations, the gray infrastructure may be required if it's a you just don't have the the space available for. It really depends, I guess.
Thank you. When I when I look at this, I mean, it looks like to me that there's going to be a lot of costs incurred by someone in implementing this. Is that is that, am I right in that or am I wrong?
Yes, there there are many programs here that are going to require additional work for staff and require new staff in order to carry out the programs.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lowe. Thank you, staff. I apologize to everyone that I was late, but I'm so happy that I'm here for this item. I want to start out by, one, again, thanking staff as others have done for all of this work because it is so evident how much has been put into this, how much thoughtfulness. And I really just want to highlight that before I get into my questions because I have a lot of questions. So I'm just preparing you for that. And also, I don't expect answers necessarily to all of them right now, but some of it is just for things for us to think about as we make changes to this going forward. So I'll tell you upfront, like, I have questions in four categories. So one is going to be community outreach, and one is electrification, seismic retrofitting, and then transportation. So I'll start with community outreach because that was the first thing that came to mind. And I really want to echo some of what Commissioner Franco Clausen was saying. Not just about the outreach that's going to need to be done for some of this, and I'll get into that around the electrification. But I had concerns about the outreach that's been done thus far. So I saw a long list of of methods that were attempted. And so I appreciate that because it's a very long list, and I see that there was a lot of effort to try to engage people in different ways. But I saw absolutely no metrics of how many people you actually reached, what your targets were for that. Like, there's just no evidence that you actually engaged all segments of the Hayward community in this. And I think it's so important that people understand this upfront, not just when it becomes a requirement for them to do. So looking at the the climate crisis emergency that the city council passed, and there was a line in there about encouraging inclusive community engagement and diverse participation. And I really wish I'd seen in this exactly where that lived. So I have a few questions just about who did the outreach and then just what were kind of your targets? And are there metrics that exist somewhere, even if you don't have those tonight, to say, yes, we really do know that we engage like all aspects of the community? Of course, you can't engage a hundred percent of the community, but I imagine that there's some kind of, you know, a representation of Hayward that could be reached.
We can tag team on this one, Eric. So I'll get started with this. Again, we started this project in twenty twenty-one, so we've been doing this outreach for about two years. And we tried to bullet point what we did, but, you know, I, no. I'm going to say upfront, we don't have specific metrics. At this event, we talked to twenty-three people. At this event, we got sixty-two emails. At this event, we did this and that. Because it's literally three people doing all of this outreach. So that was impossible. And ideally, yes, if we had enough capacity to actually measure, to create, measure, and actually do the outreach, which involves just having conversations with people, then yes, that that's the ideal. But for the most part, what we did was we compiled hundreds of people, including like all the HOAs, community-based organizations, La Clinica, we went out to clinics, we put like flyers down. We went to commercial centers like laundromats, Starbucks in the neighborhoods. We put up flyers where they would allow flyers in English and Spanish explaining that we had a pro, the project was going on. Again, it was the housing element, climate action plan, environmental justice and hazards. So we created this, it was like a super simple, very graphic flyer, like, go to this website. We went out to laundromats with iPads and asked people to fill out surveys. We went to events, like we went to lots of street events, anything that where in the summertime, they closed down streets. We had tabling events at all of those. And we would tag team housing staff, planning staff, as well as environmental services staff. So that was a way we tried to get into the community. I also went to multiple meetings at the NAACP offices and talked to people there, whoever just happened to be attending the event that they had scheduled. Went into the Jackson Triangle, had some meetings there with the Promise Neighborhood groups where I was the only English-speaking person and had to have my coworker who speaks Spanish translate the entire presentation. And where we, what we did was we created these big graphic boards, and we would take these boards with us in English and Spanish and set them up so people could read about one in one board, what is environmental justice? What is hazards? What does this mean? And encouraged people, they all had QR codes, please, if you can't comment right now. We gave people Post-its to put on the boards to go online and to and to make their comments there. Those are just a few. We also had a social media campaign where we had people describe three words. You know, we did, we partnered with Chabot College to interview over four hundred people about not only housing issues, but experiences of segregation, pollution in their neighborhoods. Went out to Chabot and met with those students, went to Cal State East Bay, had some students up there, do some projects. And then do you want to talk about some of that cap-specific outreach? Because we did go to multifamily developments and partnered with management there. Where I know, because I went with some of the people, where we did surveys, but sometimes like six people would show up.
Yeah, I mean, I think Leah covered it pretty well. I mean, we, the, those outreach efforts really covered all all four of the general plan elements that we've been working on. And I'd say, you know, we are continuing to work, especially with Chabot College and CSU East Bay students to do additional surveying in the community. And so I think we can make an extra effort going forward to make sure that, you know, that kind of demographic data and kind of, you know, neighborhood level information is collected going forward. So I'd say, I mean, we do have, I think, a lot a lot of information as far as the numbers of respondents in each of our different methods and different meetings. But yeah, it's not all in one nice little dashboard at this point, so.
So I appreciate that, and I'm glad that you all got a chance to, again, name off all the things you did. Because again, I see how much work went into this. But what I I would like to know and hope to help with somehow going forward is, one, community partnerships with other organizations that are already in the community. A staff of three doing that, what you just described, sounds like impossible almost, but you did it. But it's, I could see why you wouldn't have, in addition to that, like a dashboard with metrics. But I do think this warrants that, this warrants that. So what can I do on behalf of the residents of Hayward? How can I advocate for you all to have the support that you need to do the community outreach in a way where it's not so taxing on you, but then it feels like it's real in the community in some in some deeper ways as well? So again, that part's not a question. It could be a question around the the community partnerships. I didn't see a ton of that, other than like you named Chabot and that you went to some places. But there are organizations that do community outreach that may be able to help, like, take on some of this. So I definitely would like to explore that in the future and hopefully see just some of those metrics and things if we can help support you in getting, you know, some method of doing more of that. Okay. So I just, I also was a little concerned just that only sixteen sixteen community members attended the October thirtieth workshop. Was there outreach done specifically for the workshop?
I'd say it was primarily social media and email outreach for for that workshop.
Okay. So I guess that leads me into my questions around the electrification. And again, I'm, so I'm in support generally, similar to what, again, Commissioner Franco Clausen said. I support all of the work that you're doing, and I really want this plan to go through. But I am just raising my concerns on behalf of the community and on behalf of like, what we're saying we want to achieve with the environmental justice element and to not put a heavier burden on the people who are already struggling. So I'm really, I I'm seeing that, you know, we have until twenty thirty and then twenty forty-five. And it's like, I'm sure that there's lots of programs and things that will be implemented by then. But I saw that the cost to the city for that is high, the cost to the community for that is high. So I just really love also to see like a layout, like, I don't know if you all have, like somewhere where you've laid out like how you plan to get there with everyone. Like, we plan, I I saw a few things in other targets that were there that said, like, oh, we're going to partner with this, like AVA, for example. But I don't know that I saw specifically, like, for electrification. Like, here is a timeline of how this would roll out in the next seven years and then fifteen years after that, right? Is there a something like that that's being developed, or is it just like we put it in there and then we figure it out later?
Actually, we are currently developing a building electrification roadmap to look at basically, I think, to address these issues, providing assistance to to people that need it and and just more information out there about how to effectively electrify a home, you know, without having to upgrade the electric panel and those kinds of things. And so we are, in fact, we're working currently with a group of students at CSU East Bay who are going to focus their efforts on serving Spanish-speaking members of the community to help inform that plan. And we intend to do even more outreach over the next year to, you know, complete that plan. So, yep.
Okay, so I will skip to transportation. I think come back to the seismic because that one's just a brief question. So of the sixty-eight actions in the transportation part of the packet, fourteen of them, I thought, were somewhat like questionable, like they seem to be in contradiction. And I don't want to necessarily name them all. I have them listed here, but I can always send that over later. But either it seemed like they were things that would potentially either, as my fellow commissioner was saying, increase. I mean, you didn't name this specifically, but you were talking about the issue of idling in traffic. And some of the things about closing streets and things like that sound like they would actually increase traffic, which would increase idling, which is the total opposite of what we're trying to do. So I get we're trying to discourage driving, but I don't know that that is the way to do it. So I just wanted to hear some thoughts behind like that, for example, like how street closures would be better for the environment than than decreased idling.
Yeah, I'd say that the the idea would be to, and this, it's going to require a lot of a lot of study, looking at traffic patterns and and traffic levels on on certain streets. We would only be able to actually close streets to car traffic if they already have low levels. Or there's, I think really what we're looking for is ways to further promote walking and biking. And if it's a, if it's a street that does not have a lot of car traffic and and we can maximize active transportation on that road, that would be a great candidate, but it's going to take a lot of work to to find those unique situations.
As far as the one that mentioned a congestion charge, could you speak a little bit more about that? And because I'm interested also in the impact in general on Hayward residents, when a lot of the congestion is from people outside of Hayward, and I saw a mention of that somewhere, but then we still have that in there. And I'm also, of course, concerned about its impact on our lower-income residents.
Yeah, I again, I guess it's going to require some study. I mean, it's something that's been done in a few cities, but they're very much larger cities than than Hayward. So we really need to take a careful look and see if it's applicable to a city of our size.
And then, just in general, again, I won't name them all, but there were a few that talked about charging parking fees. And so I'm really concerned. One of the, to me, great things about being in downtown Hayward is that there's all this parking. So you can always go to the restaurants. You can go in any store. There's no worry. I can go to the library. I can do all these things. And making fees on all those lots, I really actually worry about the businesses in Hayward and how much business they could lose from that, from residents choosing to go elsewhere where maybe those, there is still free parking. So can you speak a little bit to how you would work with the businesses or what you were thinking around the fee structure? Would there be still be some free lots, or are you thinking that that would apply to all?
Yeah, I think it would be, first of all, we would definitely be working with the business community. And I know that this this topic has been addressed with the with the business owners in downtown in the past. And I think that's why parking is still free currently, because that's been the the message that we've received in the past. I think if we were to implement paid parking, it would need to be for only the maybe the longer-term parking and and keep the the shorter-term parking free. Yeah, it's a complicated issue to address.
Great. So I'll I'll stop for now. I feel like I've had a lot. My last question about the seismic retrofitting was just that I didn't see any reference to it actually in this. I saw a lot of references to the energy efficiency and electrification retrofitting. Is there a plan to include the seismic since it's part of our hazard plan to to address those things?
You know, I think, I think it may have already been included in the hazards element. I'd have to take a look. But I know that we have had seismic retrofit programs in the past for, say, like unreinforced buildings and apartment buildings that don't have, what do they call them, with the with the parking areas, you know, are.
Soft story.
Yeah, soft story buildings.
To retrofit those structures. We already implemented it.
So does it also apply to individual residences? It sounds like it's. It sounds like it's, maybe not.
Well, the hazards element does have a whole seismic section, and there's a seismic retrofit. You know, it doesn't, it's just a policy. It doesn't have like a roadmap. Like this isn't, you don't do these things and achieve seismic retrofit for every structure in Hayward. But it does, it creates a policy, which then says, the city wants to pursue this through studies, through actions, through programs. One of those was the soft story retrofit, and that's where there was a tremendous amount of outreach, went out to all the apartment owners. And that was like a concerted effort and really focused on that type of construction. But it would be, you know, if maybe you're talking about individual homeowners, there's not like a specific program or action for that. It's just like a policy.
So would it be something that we could look at including if we're talking about individual homeowners doing the energy efficiency retrofit? I just like if people are making improvements to their homes. It aligns with the cap. And so, I don't know, there may be like actual engineering reasons or something that that doesn't make sense, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, it's efficient when you're going in and doing work to do it all, right? Then to come back and do another job. So maybe it can be included in some of the, I mean, we can take a look at amending the hazards element, but maybe it could also be mentioned in any retrofits in the cap as well, to kind of create that locking, interlocking. What do you think?
Yeah, and I think there are programs and resources out there that we just need to tie in and reference. But it's something that we can try to coordinate with those efficiency upgrades as well.
Thank you. Sorry, just one more question. So I did see something that mentioned, and I don't know a lot about this either, but it talked about promoting, I believe, or I'm not sure if it said a mandate or promote, but the use of low-carbon concrete. And I was just curious if that is something that's an extra expense to builders? Like, will that discourage development at all? Or is that something that's like an industry standard, but we're just going to be encouraging it?
My understanding is that it is more expensive, but right now, the building code is requiring low-carbon concrete for very large projects. I think over time, it is going to come down to the cost to be on par with conventional concrete, but it's going to, it's going to take some time.
Great, thank you.
I know that you said that you were not going through all of your questions, but you know you really can. You have excellent questions, so if you have more questions, feel free to ask them. Okay. Are there any other commissioner questions? Okay, I have a couple. And I think, though, I really do think Commissioner Patterson answered, asked most of my questions. So if it's redundant, just say so, it's fine. But I wanted to ask, 2030 is our target date right now. I get that. Is that the drop-off date for when we're turning off natural gas for the city?
No, it's not.
So can you explain a little bit more about when that would be?
I'd say that if there is going to be a time when natural gas would be turned off, it would be 2045. But before we can do that, we need to make sure that everybody is able to transition to electric appliances. And so that's, it's a huge task. There's work being done right now to look at trying to do this on a, you know, street-by-street basis, where maybe there's a, there's a gas line that is due for replacement because of its age. And, you know, there's studies being, you know, there's actually projects out there where resident, the people are talking to the residents about trying to get everybody to switch over. And if they agree, then there can be some money being put towards those electrification efforts. But yeah, so it's, 2030 would not be the time. We have, we have a lot of, a lot of work to do before we start turning off gas in certain areas.
Okay, because when I was reading the materials, it looked like 2030 was the target date for that. So I just was a little confused, and that's just my reading of it. And then similarly, with the disincentivizing the single person vehicles on the roads, I wanted to know, with that, as well as with turning off the natural gas for the city, are we just relying on social media and our outreach to let folks know? Because when I look at, for example, 2030, isn't that far away. And I know that most of my friends didn't know that we were going to make them change their appliances to electric. And most of my friends didn't know that we were going to start disincentivizing them driving to work in their cars. So what point are we going to start letting the public know in a very real way?
Well, I'd say a lot of this is happening at the regional level. It's not going to be just on Hayward's shoulders. When it comes to appliances, the Bay Area Air Quadi Management District has already adopted new rules that are going to phase out gas appliances. So in 2027, I believe, is the year when you will no longer be able to buy a natural gas water heater in the Bay Area. So it's going to be this natural, you know, depending on the life cycle of the equipment, as the equipment in our buildings is replaced, it's going to, it's going to have to be replaced with electric. And so either by, and so the Air District, I know, is working on, how do they, how do they implement these rules in an equitable way and provide incentives for people? Because right now, it is more expensive to install, say, a heat pump water heater compared to a gas water heater.
So I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like the answer is, they'll find out when they try to buy a new water heater and they can't. Or they'll find out when they try to buy a new appliance and they can't buy it. Is that accurate or not quite accurate?
I'd say that there's going to be a lot of information, you know, be made available to the public when, when these rules become effective, so.
Got it. I have some more statements, but that's all my questions for now. Do any other, oh, Commissioner Stevens?
So if natural gas is turned off, can I purchase a propane tank and run my natural gas appliances off propane?
I, well, you can definitely do that with an outdoor appliance, but I don't think that propane, I don't think that it's allowed for indoor use.
So in the analysis, and I realize that the city hasn't done this analysis, but do you know if the state or any local agencies have done the analysis of converting all these gas appliances? Some of them that may exist in these houses since the 1920s? If we convert these all to electrical facilities, like what's the overall impact associated with this massive material change and upgrade and replacement? Has anybody actually looked at that? Or are we just doing this because we want to make us feel good about it?
No, I'd say the Public Utilities, the California Public Utilities Commission and the California Energy Commission are both doing a lot of work to make sure that the grid is going to meet the needs once, as we add more electric appliances.
No, I get that. But my point being is, you know, if I have a product that's 100 years old and I maintain that product for 100 years, there's less energy that goes into producing, to maintaining that product, even if it's burning natural gas, than if I produce a brand-new product. And I've yet to see any compelling studies or evidence doing that evaluation.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
Because what we're basically saying is, is that all of these, these, something that has a long lifespan, like a stove and an oven, right? Those don't, don't go out every decade. Those can be 100 years old. In fact, I have one that's from 1920 in my house. So what is the environmental cost of me replacing that?
Yeah, I don't have the answer, obviously. But, yeah, but no, I, point taken, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? So let's open up to commissioner comments. Commissioner Franco Clausen.
So I just want to make sure that I understand our next steps here. The recommendation is to approve this and push it forward to City Council on the 23rd. Even with all our questions that we have regarding some of the recommendations, and it's very thoughtful, but there was a lot of questions here. Is this something that we get pushed to at our next planning commission meeting to make a decision? Or does it have to be pushed forward today?
It doesn't, it could be continued to January, because that would be the next meeting. It'd be a month from now. However, you know, I just, unless you feel like there are going to be some meaningful modifications, what will happen is all your questions and comments will be summarized and provided to the council in the background. On this date, the planning commission met, maybe had concerns about equity and outreach and metrics and plans and concerns about the environmental potential impacts of replacement of units and the grid. You know, all of this will be summarized and provided to the council. In addition, they will have this meeting to watch.
Yeah.
So I guess that question would be, would, what would be the, would there be a meaningful point in pushing it a month before it goes? Because then it would be pushed another month before it goes to the council.
No, that was a really good, because I wanted to know if these are concerns will be captured. I want to add, just add, the comment that I want to add is, you know, I'm a new homeowner, you know, first generation too on top of that. And I can tell you, you know, which part, you know, my body, I feel like I've put on the black market to get all my electricity I'm paying for right now. And having, so it's not cheap. And again, like, but we can afford it and we have the privilege of that. I'm just wondering how that's going to be distributed to meet these goals for people in Hayward. I drive through a lot of these neighborhoods where my friends live, and you have two to three cars, you know, sitting outside, you know, two to three families unfortunately forced to live together. And they're just barely making it, and they have to, they have to live in these conditions. The expectations that people can move as fast of our ambitious goals, it's just a concern I have in, when it comes to equity and equality and people that, to be able to live a good quality of life here in Hayward. And so I can't, I can't stress enough that not everyone's going to be able to catch up with the goals and the deadlines, that we could just do a great job of, you know, providing these opportunities, the outreach and the metrics, and making sure that residents that probably will never be able to afford it, need to at least have the opportunity to know of programs that they can have. Because there's nothing worse than to making people choose between sending their kid to college or keeping their house. You know, it just, it's, maybe not everyone here has to deal with those types of decisions, but it does happen. So, and we have a really big obligation and responsibility, sitting on this diocesan and working for this city, to make sure that we always think about every person here when we do that. So I really appreciate all of the work that you put into it and all the partners, which I know a lot of them to put this together, but I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, so thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know this is an possibly difficult proposal. So I'm, I feel that we've gotten in this position because there's a lot of environmental advocates in California that are actually bullies. And they don't think practically about how to implement policies to achieve the goals that help us all meet what we need to do. So we have something in here where we've said, if feasible, as possible. And I just, as a person that's been a practitioner in this field for 25 years, that quote "as feasible" is really, really, really difficult to understand. It's also really difficult to spread liability. And when I see things like green infrastructure, I think that's a great. But I can tell you, last winter, when the large storms came, most of the nature-based solutions, a lot of them that I've seen failed. So I think there needs to be some realism and some practicality about how this is actually implemented. And I just don't think the city should be bullied by the state of California or the Bay Area Quality Management District. I think there needs to be some grounding and some reality in how this moves forward. And I think some of the commissioners mentioned, I think there's a real cost issue here. I mean, I think somebody said here, like, how is this going to be afforded? Is Hayward going to hire a bunch of people to try to implement this? What is it going to cost the development community to actually build this? You know, I just paid $5,000 for my property, or my property insurance. I'm lucky I got property insurance, I guess, because a lot of people probably are going to lose it. So how are other people in this community going to pay for that? So I just, I, I understand the aspiration, but I just don't understand the practicality of this. So I just, I wish we could just get a little more real and a little bit more nuts and bolts about, you know, how we can achieve these things. So thank you.
Commissioner comments. Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you. So I just really appreciate all the comments and questions from my fellow commissioners. I'm struggling a little bit, because again, I really do support the overall effort of what we're trying to do. But I think, I mean, I agree a lot with Commissioner Stevens. I just don't know how much of it, like, it's almost like we threw everything we could in there, as opposed to like narrowing it down just a little bit. And I just, I'm really worried about how a lot of it does not, to me, reflect the environmental justice piece. So I'm struggling with that a little bit, but I don't want to hold it up because I see the value in so much of it. I really wanted to just comment too, just on CNN there, that the city of Hayward is a leader in climate action in California and in the nation, and went in the 2022 CDP Cities A-plus award, or being on the list, like how amazing that is and how great that is for the city. And so I just want to acknowledge how much we have been doing, but also I just don't want us to, to put this on the backs necessarily of people. And I get that we have some time limits because of what's happening with the climate, but it, we have to be realistic. And our community outreach cannot be performative. It has to be real, because this is going to impact people in a way that is as impactful as the climate change that we're trying to prevent. And I want us to just be very aware of that and very clear on that. And so, again, anything that can be done to lay out more plans of how that outreach can be done, anything I can do in my position as a commissioner or as a community member to help you all, like to advocate, like do I need to write a letter? Like, what do I need to do to help? So it's not three people out there trying to do all this, because I really don't think that that's, this warrants more than that. And it's not really fair, I think, to city staff to put that on you. But I think this warrants a much more robust ad campaigns on TV, like town hall meetings, like all of the things that we really need to do, especially if we're going to do all of the things that are in here, like electrification. And I'm also concerned, I'll just say, just as far as electrification, if you have solar panels on your house, the cost of that is so much lower than if you don't. But who has solar panels on their house? People with more money. So all of this is just very difficult to put on people who I know don't have those things. Thank you.
Any more commissioner comments?
I just want to say that, you know, I think 10 years ago, we were just starting to have these conversations, and it's great to see what Hayward has done. I mean, Hayward's amazing, and in this particular area, we are an example for other cities. And so I'm very proud of the work that the city has done, the work that city staff has done, not just in the past, but also for this here today. You guys have done an excellent job. I have the same concerns of my colleagues. There have been some excellent points made by each of the, my fellow commissioners. And I too am concerned about the grid. I too am concerned about the cost and how are we going to get all the experts that we need in order to implement some of these things? How are we going to get the staff that we need? How are we going to get the staff that we need in order to do the outreach? That's what I was asking, why I was asking about the outreach. Because I, I do think our number one, our client are the residents. And so we got to make sure that they are fully informed and, and fully equipped to do what we're asking them to do. So I, I'm, I have a lot of concern, just like my colleagues, but I also, just like many of them have said, am very, very interested in making sure that we continue on the path that Hayward's been going on so that we are lowering our greenhouse gas emissions and that we are continuing to try to get, meet our goals of 2045. And so it's, it's a complicated issue. It's not easy. This is a really hard issue. It's like trying to solve any of the other complex issues that city council or, or upper government has to deal with. But I just, I applaud the effort to try to do as much as we can to make sure that we are moving towards what we need to do to, to prevent climate change, but also doing what we need to do to make sure that, that all these measures are equitable. So as we move forward, I would just ask staff to, you know, don't, just because we're all saying that we're concerned about different things, please don't abandon the goal of, of making sure that we are doing our part as a city to prevent climate change. That is extremely important, I think. I can speak for us up here, that that is extremely important to us. So keep, keep working hard, keep trying to get us to that point. But these are just things that we just want you to consider and think about. And if there are things that we can do to help, I think I can speak for my colleagues and say that we're all willing to do our part as well as, as residents of this great city. So with that, I would open it up to any, anyone want to make a motion? Any motions? No one wants to make a motion? I'm going to make the motion. So I, I would propose that we accept the update to the Hayward City Climate Action Plan amended hazards element and adoption of new environmental justice element requiring an amendment to the Hayward 2040 General Plan and adoption of related environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act because I think that there's hope. I think there's hope in knowing that this will be, this will be, continue to be looked at. It will be, we will continue to grow and learn. And as the years go on, we're going to get better and better at this. And I, I'm very hopeful that when we come for our next amendment, that we are just going to have more knowledge, more resources, more thoughts about how to get this done in the most equitable way possible. But for where we are now and what we have at our fingertips and at our disposal as a city, I think this is where we need to be to move forward.
Can I get a second?
Yes. With a quick comment. I remember when Covered California came out, there was a lot of pushback because it wasn't a perfect website and it wasn't a perfect document at first. And my fear was that it would be stopped altogether. And so I hope that, and I like what the chair says about in the future being able to make some alterations. So I don't, I don't want you to think that we're trying to stop this at all. I think the most important goal is to continue it, in my opinion, but knowing that we may not have a perfect system, but that we can alter it in the future. And so with that, I second that motion.
May we have a vote? Ms. Mordecai?
Yes, Chair Low. Commissioner Stevens?
No.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank O'Cloughson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Chair Ali Sullivan absent. Vice Chair Low.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I will close item two and open up for commissioner reports. And usually Mr. Lou Chirico does those. So does anyone have any commissioner reports? I would like to say, welcome, welcome, welcome to Commissioner Myers. We are thrilled that you are here. We are so excited to work with you. And from the bottom of my heart, if there's any way I can help you and to get acclimated to this new environment, I'm more than happy to do it. I, I'm thrilled that you are here. Is there anything you want to say?
Thank you very much for that. That's very nice. I am humbled and very honored to be up here with you guys. I've watched many, many meetings and you guys are kind of a class on your own, so I'm really humbled to be amongst you guys. Everybody's so welcoming, very generous with offering help. And so, yeah, I'm just looking forward to doing my part and joining you guys. Thank you. Oh, and one last thing. I'm a little saddened that Commissioner Artie Garg is not here because she is a brilliant woman, in my opinion. But I'm sure wherever she's going, she's just going to rock, you know, knock it out of the park. So that's all.
Yes, she definitely will be missed, for sure. Anyone have any other comments? Any commissioner comments or anything? All right, speak now or forever hold your peace? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.